Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start the meeting. But before we do, I'm looking for a motion to approve Councilman Carl DeYoung's participation in this council meeting via call-in by the phone.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Okay. So, a motion made by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilwoman DeYoung. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, so made the call to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, will you do the roll call?
Yes. President.
President.
They're doing roll call.
I took the head minute and Carl DeYoung present.
Okay, thank you.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Couch, do you have a motion to make?
I do. Madam Mayor, I'd like to add the memorandum of understanding with between the city and the Cedar Valley Public Safety Guild take-home vehicles to the consent agenda as item number 11.
All right.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Motion was made by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I am looking for an approval to the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, now looking for a motion for the consent agenda adding to the memorandum of understanding.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda adding the memorandum of understanding.
Second.
I have some questions.
All right.
So, I had a question on number five as to why there were two listed on-call.
Okay. You're talking about the public works agreements?
Right.
Okay.
That's my first question.
Thank you, Councilman. Typically, we award two on-call agreements every year. That gives us backup in case on an emergency basis, which we use these four quite frequently. If the first contractor's not available, the second one mobilizes and does the work.
Okay.
That's the reason for that.
I assumed that was the reason, but I just wanted to know for sure. And on number six, has Leo already gone on that trip?
No, he's not left yet.
Okay, so when does that take place?
I thought it was in the memo. I don't recall offhand. It seems like it was in, let's see.
So, the numbers on that are just still kind of iffy?
Well, they're his estimates, of course. I think he's already, you know...
So, within that budget range?
Right, correct.
Okay. And my last one was on number nine, why Skagit Valley Hospital as the clinical site agreement instead of our local hospital, United General?
We already have an agreement with Skagit Valley Hospital or United General, so this is just broadening scope.
Okay, so this one, though, was specific for some intubation or something?
Yes, it's so that the medics and EMTs can go out and do intubations and IVs at both facilities.
Okay. And on those intubations, do we have people who are already confirmed to do that sort of work?
Right, they give permission prior to consent. The patient would give consent prior to being intubated.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman DeYoung, do you have any questions? Want to include you? Okay. So, motion was made, I believe, by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilman Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so if I could have Ben Pruitt come forward, please.
For those of you who maybe don't have an agenda with you, actually, tonight is quite an honor because Mr. Pruitt actually had, you started here with the fire department, did you not? And now he's coming back as our fire EMT paramedic, and we're swearing in tonight. So, if you'll hold up your right hand. I, Ben Pruitt?
I, Ben Pruitt.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
I am a citizen of the United States?
I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington?
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Washington?
The laws of the state of Washington.
And I will, to the best of my judgment?
And I will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully?
Truly, faithfully.
And impartially perform?
Impartially.
The duties of firefighter, paramedic?
The duties of firefighter.
In and for the city of Cedar Valley?
In and for the city of Cedar Valley.
Skagit County, Washington?
Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed?
As such duties are prescribed.
By the laws of healthy God?
By the laws of healthy God.
Congratulations. So, could we have been trying to... Teresa? Okay. Okay, if I could have Dan McElroy. So, it's a promotion, removing Dan up from sergeant to lieutenant. He's already been harassed about being called Lieutenant Dan. So, I'm going to swear to you. Here's up your right hand. I, Dan McElroy?
I, Dan McElroy.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen?
That I am a citizen.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the state of Washington?
And of the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution?
And I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington?
Of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment?
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully?
Truly and faithfully.
And impartially perform?
And impartially perform.
The duties of police lieutenant?
The duties of police lieutenant.
In and for?
In and for.
The city of Cedar Valley?
The city of Cedar Valley.
Skagit County, Washington?
Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed?
As such duties are prescribed.
By law, so healthy God?
By law, so healthy God.
Congratulations.
I know you're going to get tired of everything, aren't you?
Oh, yeah. I just started when I first got here. If anybody has a notice, this is a...
Okay, now we'll move on to staff reports, and since the chief is stepping out for the moment, should we go ahead and start with you, Chief Klinger?
I just have one, we're bringing on some new residents. We've got one of our volunteer, outside volunteers that'll be moving into quarters, and we just brought on a new student from Skagit Valley College, which we're real excited about. We still have a couple openings, and we're still hoping to get those filled. As we go on through the summer, that we'll be able to get some more from the college to come over. And I'm going to let Chief Tucker talk about our, we had a meeting yesterday with Skagit County with mental health, and I'll let Chief Tucker bring that up.
All right. Chief Tucker?
All right. The meeting Dean was talking about was, we had a very hostile and aggressive subject that was stationed at a local treatment facility up on the northern state grounds. The subject was up there, court-ordered to be up there, and had a lot of, had a lot of issues with staff up there, assaulted a paramedic when he was brought in from eastern Washington, and assaulted staff members at the hospital as well, or at the treatment center as well. We went up there to help stabilize him, get him into a secure room, and then we were called up there, I think, 10 to 12 times after that, probably more like 14 or 15 between the police department and fire department. On one date, this started in January, January 20th, we had the first assault, and on the 22nd, we had to go up and subdue him to be taken over to Skagit Valley Hospital for emergency medical reasons. The thing that really stands out for that was the entire Cedar Valley Police Department was involved in doing that, as well as the, pretty much, the whole Upper Skagit Tribal Police Department, and a med crew, and I think four firefighters as well. So, in all, there were about 20 of us tied up dealing with this guy on two separate occasions, and we did that because we wanted to be able to pretty much overwhelm him without having to hurt him or get any of our people hurt. As it was, we had one of our officers assaulted, punched in the face, and was checked out at the ER to make sure he didn't have any broken bones in his eye socket area. Eventually, the folks at the treatment center had the subject transferred over to Skagit ER, and the whole cycle started again when he didn't go back to North Sound, which is the treatment center that they were at. He was left at Skagit ER because they could no longer deal with him up there, and that was the, really, the crux of our concerns was how that was all handled. But really, is the, we've identified some, just some huge gaping areas in our, the whole mental health treatment system. This subject never should have been brought over here, never should have been put up there, never should have ended up in Skagit Valley ER. The best place for him was at either east, eastern state hospital or western state hospital, and they had no room for him, or they refused him because apparently he's a problem over there as well. Mount Vernon had exactly the same thing going on. They had two different incidents where they had to have their entire shift of officers and hospital staff help subdue this guy to get him into restraints. And a couple of you have worked in the medical field before, they described at one point they had him in four-point restraints for nine days. That's just a horror. I mean, to me, that's, that's the worst part of it. We have to deal with these people on a regular basis, the ER has to deal with them on a regular basis, the fire department has to deal with them on a regular basis. But once we deal with them, there is, there's nothing really for them if they're at that level. We have a systemic failure, and what we hoped from our big meeting yesterday was to present our, kind of our things in a roundtable discussion with health providers, people from the mental health facility, we had somebody from the governor's office, Tim Halloran from the county was our, kind of the emcee of this thing with Mayor Johnson, Mayor Bedrow, and Commissioner Dolested there as well. We had 36 people in this meeting try to come up with, I guess, some ideas we'd like to present to Olympia, because this is unacceptable. And this is one person who was more violent than most we deal with, but he's actually not the worst person that we've got out there on the street. This has kind of become more of a norm, and we don't have the ability to deal with this with what we have here, and we're going to be looking at having a bigger facility or a, a new facility constructed right here in town for this very purpose. And if we are going to be stuck in the same boat, this could be an everyday occurrence, and we just don't have the ability to do that. So, we all got together, and I think it originated as a meeting to point fingers at people and say, "We have a problem, you have a problem, this wasn't done right." But I think it got turned into more of a constructive assessment of what we did and where we need to go, and where we'd like to go. We don't have all the answers, but we had, we kind of came up with some ideas, and it was, I think, I thought it was very constructive, and we all got to kind of, kind of share our concerns. So, it was, it was a good thing, but I honestly don't know where it's going to go, because this is a bigger problem. We have a United General Hospital ER that can't support these kind of people when we bring them in. We have a Skagit Valley ER that we kind of defer to, they are better set up to deal with this. They don't have the staffing manpower and all that to deal with it. Mount Vernon Police Department doesn't have the manpower to deal with the people that we dump into Mount Vernon. We kind of voted and decided we wanted to put a facility in Burlington instead, but I don't think that counts for anything. But just wanted to share a little bit of that with you, all to let you know, kind of know where we're at. We could fill you in on more details, and you kind of see a little bit more of the details if you get ahold of me personally, or Dean can share some of that with you as well. A couple of other things that I have are just, you saw one of the best things from our restructuring, Dan's promotion to lieutenant, Sergeant Harris was in the back of the room. Sergeant Harris, I may have talked to you about this before, Sergeant Harris was kind of the brain, had this brainstorm for this restructuring. When I discussed about possibly promoting Sergeant, Lieutenant McElroy, he says, "Well, why don't we do a little bit of shifting around, change people up?" And that got us ahead of being promoted to sergeant, and Jason is, was promoted to a detective sergeant, or moved to a detective sergeant, and he's taken over proactive patrolling. Some of you may have heard of some of the police activity we had down on Fidalgo Street at Third Street this, last week. That was Jason and our officers going after what he's tasked with doing is proactive patrol. I think Jared, you had some folks, you and, or you and some folks came down as well. This is all some really good stuff that we're working with the new sheriff, McDermott, and Upper Skagit and other agencies trying to get back into a more proactive approach to crime fighting. The subjects that we were dealing with down off of Third Street, that was the result of some controlled drug buys by officers, and a search warrant was served, we recovered meth, heroin, we bought meth and heroin from this, this residence, we recovered several firearms and quite a bit of money, and so we're working on an abatement for that location to let them know if we have any other issues there, we are going to be seeking to seize their home. We can do that under drug seizure stuff, but we got some fairly serious charges and $100,000 bail on the guy that we arrested there. So, this is what we're looking for in our proactive patrol is going after the dealers. We have such a, we all have such a big opioid issue all around. We're not looking at hammering users, that's really kind of a waste of time, that's more of a treatment thing that we're hoping to get to, but we have to get into that proactively approaching and arresting some people, finding out the best pathways for them, and then getting rid of some of the bad dealers. And that's what a lot of this is, you're seeing here with a couple of promotions and some shuffling around and some requests we're going to have to counsel, is a proactive versus a reactive approach. We don't have the manpower, we're never going to have the manpower to truly be a reactive police department. It just takes too many bodies to be on defense. We're, we're going on the offense. And what's coming from that is we're building some stronger ties to the sheriff's office, we're building some very strong ties to the Upper Skagit Tribal Police, we've got some very good ties into the proactive team with the Mount Vernon Police Department, and we had the SWAT team in town for this last thing. That's how serious this was. These are things that we're facing all the time, these are things that our fire and paramedics are stumbling into with the overdoses. It's a very serious matter, and I'm hoping as we move along with proactive policing among the opioid work group leadership team as well, we talked at Law and Justice Meeting today about an approach to attacking an opioid problem. This is part of that solution. Part of that solution is the medical field, mental health field, treatment providers, police, the courts, and the public all doing what we can to kind of fight this. So, we've got a fairly serious fight ahead of us, but we're getting all the pieces in place, and we got the right people doing the right stuff. So, things are going well there, and, you know, I think that's probably enough.
Well, it's a lot, and thank you so much to you and your team, and to you too, Chief Klinger, for all that you are doing, and Councilman Couch and your team. Thank you so much, we appreciate your service. Well, he said that questions could be answered, that talk to him later, is what he suggested. Is that okay?
Perfect.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. So, I got a few agenda items on tonight, so I'll be brief here. All I really, unless council has any questions for me, all I wanted to point out is our permit tech is, said, Joanne has set her retirement date in June 28th, so we have officially put out a job posting for permit tech in the Building and Planning Department. That was posted just last weekend, and will be up for a few weeks, and hopefully we'll get some local qualified persons applying for the job.
Okay. Are there any questions? Councilman DeYoung, do you have any questions?
I do not do the request, so madam, it's time. Thank you.
All right. Very sorry about the connection, but thank you. Okay, Mr. Feierberger?
Thank you, Mayor. Not too much to report on, other than I did want to, just for the audience, all the council members know this, but our visit to Olympia regarding the Jones John Liner Trail Road project, our request to add that to the Senate's LEAP project list, that's the transportation package that they're working on down there, was successful. Mayor led a team of Aaron and I, and Councilmember DeYoung went down for a second trip with me, and those, those were productive. We got enough support from the Transportation Committee to add that project in, 30.6 million, that's the entire project. It's, I understand it went to the Rules Committee, and after that, it'll go to the House. We'll probably have to make some additional trips down during that process as they bring those together, but that's really a huge first step for us on getting that project to move forward. So, and I certainly thank the mayor for her leadership and everybody who participated in that. I would have to say that Councilmember DeYoung was quite, quite useful in that second trip, in his knowledge of the various senators. We were able to visit with four of the Transportation Committee members in the vestibule of the chambers, and I think that was very useful for us, so my thanks for that. Other than that, we are expecting, yep, this week, Carletti's preliminary layout for the solid waste fleet operations facility, and we'll be examining that, and if it looks okay, we'll be ready to move forward into the full design scoping phase of that project, and we'll be bringing that back to you in a future council meeting. So, that's enough for tonight.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for all the work that you did on the transportation piece. That was, that was a ton of work. Thank you. Mr. Berg, do you want to go next, or shall I have Mr. Marion? Okay. All right, Mr. Marion?
I just have one item tonight. A little earlier this evening, I emailed to everybody our comprehensive financial management policies. It's just in draft form, so I'm looking for any ideas or anything that you would like to add to those. We have an opportunity to talk about them for a few minutes, I believe, at our next work session. So, I'll be looking, trying to finalize those up, at least for this year, to get those into our budget document that we have coming out here pretty soon. And that's it.
All right. Well, I'll take a look at it and see if we have any suggestions. Thank you. All right, Councilman Couch?
I just wanted to pass on my thanks to Mark for moving along the solid waste facility building project. I know I haven't been on council long, and it was something that I'm sure it's, it's been much needed for a long time, and I know that the guys down there greatly appreciate that, and we can better take care of our equipment, so, Mark, I really appreciate you making that happen.
And the team was very excited to hear that that has received this support, it has from the mayor in particular and council, council member, and we appreciate that, and we're hoping to be able to move forward with that and make it a reality.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Noone?
I have a couple of things. I wanted to remind everybody that the bowling bash fundraiser for Meals on Wheels is coming up here, oh, I think, around the 30th, so I'll be coming around and see if I can scrounge a few bucks off of the city employees, so it's for, for an excellent cause, and I hope you can put a few dollars aside maybe and, and help out a little bit. I left the two chiefs a flyer over there, you know, if they want to sponsor a team, that would be great, too, and maybe if they could bowl, that would be excellent, but the chief, fire chief, says he's going to be out of town, so. But anyway, I've been thinking about that, and maybe, maybe you can help out a little bit. Another thing is I want to thank the mayor and Aaron Berg for putting on the little retreat. It was very, very helpful, and it's the first one I've been, been to that I felt that I could freely express myself, and the environment was excellent, like the mayor and I was talking, that I thought it was a little bit cramped, and, you know, you couldn't hold on to your teacup. I, I managed to spill, and Mr. Berg managed to spill, too. That made me feel good, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
Just playing my part for the team.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Carnegie?
I was going to say, it didn't make me feel good, just spilled, spilled my tea on my things. I just wanted to mention, well, Paula was there this morning, I don't know if you saw me, at the Boys and Girls Breakfast fundraiser they had this morning. We have one youth from our Cedar Valley Club that is up for the Youth of the Year, and it was really well attended and great as usual. Oh, and then I saw Todd there, too, as well. We were sitting at the same table. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kinser?
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Councilwoman Dunley? All right. Councilwoman Kelly?
I just brought a copy of our TimberTech posters for everyone, and there's a few back there on the table. I appreciate your help of getting them out to the public at large, and if you want more, I'll be happy to provide some for you. The event is, it's on the end of April, but it is something that we are coordinating with not only the school district, but also the concrete school district, the downtown association, and two of our members, which is Circus Mountains and Little Brook, and where we got our retreat, and Terry Ice and Free doing great job out there. And so, getting them posted would be very helpful.
Mr. Berg, do you want to?
I don't think I've got anything to add tonight, but thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, I just want to say thank you to both the staff and to the council for really contributing to the retreat. There was a lot, I think it was very productive, and there was a lot that happened, and your input is greatly appreciated. And for the council, so you know, on the 27th, we will bring before you a document that will talk about the different council, what am I trying to say, committees that we have, and we can talk about it then. You'll have a chance to take a look at it, and we can talk about it then. So, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you. All right, so it is 7:29, and I am going to open it up for public comment. If you have a public comment, please give your name, your address, and try to keep it to three minutes. Is there anyone for public comment? No one? Okay. So, it's now 7:30, and I will close public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business. And the first item on the agenda is the amendments to the residential 15 zone. So, John?
Thank you. So, this is a second read on a minor code amendment to the R-15 zone zoning regulations. So this is a second read on a minor code amendment to the R-15 zone zoning regulations. This was requested by a developer, and so the Planning Commission reviewed it and made some changes based on what they felt was a better outcome. The long and short of this is, one change does not change the density allowed in the R-15 zone, what it does is, it changes the number of units that are allowed in any single building in the R-15 zone. Currently, the regulations allow for eight units per building as a maximum, this would allow for up to 12 units per building if the building is three stories and the units are evenly distributed between those three floors. That is, that is the extent of the change, so asking for a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Yeah, it'll be ordinance 1920-19. So any discussion? Questions?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1920-19, and ordinance amending Chapter 17.16 Cedar Woolley Municipal Code to increase the number of units allowed in one building in residential 15 zone.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Couch, and seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ordinance 1920-19 is adopted. And before we move on, I am gonna extend my apologies to Councilman DeYoung. Carl, I went right through and bypassed you when it came to the councilman report, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Thank you. I was able to hear the director outside of his entire, so I apologize for that, but I just wanted to make sure that we got in, and I think that the Jones-John Liner projects, the Sonic Transportation Bill project list, did I talk about?
Yes. Yes. Do you have a question regarding it?
Hello?
Carl, do you have a question regarding the transportation package?
Hello?
Carl, we can't hear you, can you hear us? Carl?
Hello?
Yes, hello?
I'm hearing very little in this spot, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move, due to poor connection, that we continue without Councilmember DeYoung.
All right. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Feel bad about that, I do. So, having said all that, and gone through all that, we will move on to number two, the proposed annexation. John?
All right. Waiting for that signal. So, again, a second read, this is for a proposed annexation on Jones Road, it's approximately 1.25 acre parcel that the property owner has requested to annex into the city. So the process from here is for the council to determine whether or not they annex it. They will entertain a petition of annexation, and if so, should the city require simultaneous adoption of proposed zoning regulation? Zoning regulation would be the R5s, residential 5 zoning designation for the property. And then on top of that, if the petition is accepted, should the city require the assumption of all or any portion of the existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed? And what that means is, will they pay the same taxes and levies and everything that had been voted on and approved by city voters, or do they somehow pay differently than everybody else? And of course, we recommend that they pay the same as everybody else. So, presuming that the city council is willing to accept the petition for annexation from this property owner, I would ask that a series of three motions be made. Those motions are on page 117 of the packet, page two of the memo, under Staff Recommendations. First would be to make a motion to continue the proposed annexation process requested by the Falklands Incorporated for a parcel on East Jones Road, and...
Do you want me to go ahead and make those motions right away? I can do that? Is there any conversation first or questions?
If it's the council's pleasure, sure.
Are there questions in conversation? Okay. So is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to continue the proposed annexation process requested by the Falklands Inc. for a parcel on East Jones Road.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly, all in favor? Opposed? All right, now let's move on to the second motion, a motion that the city required a time-changing adoption of the proposed zoning regulations. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that the city requires a time-changing adoption of the proposed zoning regulations.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Cornigay, all in favor? Opposed? All right. And then the last motion, do I have someone?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that the city require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly, and seconded by Councilwoman Dunleavy, all in favor? Opposed? All right. The motion's Carrie. And we are on to the third proposed comprehensive, the third item here, proposed comprehensive plan amendments. John?
Okay, so, if you can remember, all the way back to the last Wednesday, we had a work session together with the Planning Commission, and the planning department on that agenda had asked if there was any items that the city council wanted to put on the 2019 docket for, that's the projects that the Planning Commission will be working on in any changes to the zoning code or comprehensive plan for 2019. The one thing that we wanted, staff had requested, was to include updates to the transportation element of the comprehensive plan to be included on that 2019 comprehensive plan docket, and that was the only item that the council had at the end of the night on Wednesday, so necessary to be on the 2019 docket. So, I'm looking for a motion to include those transportation element updates in the 2019 docket.
Councilman Cash? Did you have a question?
No, I haven't.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to include updates to the transportation element of the comprehensive plan for inclusion on the 2019 comprehensive plan docket.
All right. All right. I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser to make the motion to include the updates to transportation, comprehensive plan, seconded by Councilwoman Cornigay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So is there anything for the committee to order? If not, we are adjourned.
I was calling to say thanks. I was able to come back in using our assistant, assistant listening device. We are planning this year, the council pledged to do some AV upgrades, so we'll make sure to build into that project a better interface for when a phone call is necessary, but obviously it didn't work that well tonight.
Thank you, everyone.